Pursuing. Mass General Law thirty A, Section twenty, I hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording will be being made of this meeting. First off, if I'd like to open it for any public comment of things we've done in the past or things that we are about to do. There's anyone has any comments, like to hear from them now. Kathy is our only person from the public. Or Peg, did you have something?
Yes. I was wondering if Conrad would be so generous to go to the second of August meeting. Cause I have, we have a couple of doctors appointments and I'm not sure I'd be back by six, so. I was wondering if he could do that for us.
I'm here if I'm available, I mean, if you need me.
Wonderful.
And.
Thank you, because it would be better to have five there. You know, at something like that, I think it's rather important for the client. As well, so thank you, thank you, Conrad.
As I was unofficial.
You, you're official and you've been in attendance for all the meetings that they've been in here, so.
Okay.
The one aspect or another. Okay, speaking of which, no public comments, we'll, we'll do a small discussion about that two hundred Laurel Street, I was hoping to do the, the site plan tonight, but um, Beth, I guess we'll do it all on the, when we have that big meeting. We'll, we'll hit the site plan out first and then we'll get into the special permits. You gotta remember, our, our duty in this, the site plan is basically that they have all their I's dotted, T's crossed, if there's anything extra we would like to see in it. That can be addressed mainly in special permit, in, in this case, I don't think it has to be addressed in site plan review. But it, their site plan seemed extensive and I really don't see much issue in it. Does anybody else?
Yeah, Buck, I got a bunch, I got a bunch.
You got a bunch of issues about it, alright.
Yeah.
What, alright, let's, I'll try to.
I mean, do you want to talk about it on the second, or you?
No, let's talk about the site plan part of it right now.
Yeah.
We can do that. Oh shoot. I'll try to uh.
Well, yeah, it'd be good to let them know ahead of time, maybe. So then they can come in for the site plan and be far ahead, you know, ahead of the game.
Do they, do they know we're talking about this tonight?
It was on our agenda, yes.
But we never called.
We were, this was our discussion, we'll have, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight.
Okay.
Okay. There we go. Okay, Conrad, go ahead. If you want to share your screen, if that'd be easier, or if I could follow, try to follow along here.
Uh, you want to, can you go to sheet two or three?
Which one?
Sheet two or three on the plan.
On the plan, not the narrative.
Yes, towards, it's towards the end.
Figure two, or?
Uh, no, all, all the way to the end. It's all, you know, where's the site plans? Well, I'm sorry, I took it out of the book.
Is there more in the book that we didn't get on the file?
Yeah, the book's got all the eleven by seventeen sheets in the back of it.
That are not here?
They're not on this exhibit, no, apparently.
No, I'm not seeing it. This is what I have. Shoot.
That's the same thing I had last time, Buck, that looks just like. Yeah, I, I went down and picked up the, the booklet, uh, it was about a half inch thick. And it was a, I think there's four, eleven by seventeen sheets on it, had the, the site plan, the existing topography plan, it had, it had the building elevations, it had had a a photometric plan on it, and others.
Oh.
I, I think Jim Scalise shared his screen last time when he.
Right, yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and the booklet's obviously different than what he shared.
Well, why don't you, why don't you leave that, leave that photo on there, I'll just, I'll just run through some thoughts quick, just to see what I was looking at. On, on the project, on the, the project narrative, it states that the property is three hundred and seventy feet of frontage by three point zero seven acres in, in area. The assessments map shows pretty much the same thing. On the sheet two or three of their plan, on the site plan, there are no property course dimensions on it. And it says the property is two point two acres, not three point oh seven, so I'm not sure which is correct, is it, is it three acres or is it two point two? That was one item. And the only reason why that would make a difference is their calculation on, you know, table two is all based on a three acres, not on two point two. So I mean, they would have to adjust their, their tabulations under table two, if.
And is that number of units you're, you're going by? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's regarding the maximum number of dwelling units per acre.
See. Yeah, I know what you mean, and.
It's, it's a calculation, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, again, it's, it's a function of, is it three, three acres, there's a three point oh seven acres based on the text, the assessors map, or is it two point two acres based on Scalise's plan? Again, there's, there's a question.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, on, on the site plan, page three or three, it indicates that there are gonna be six new guardco gullwing LED light fixtures that are supposed to be installed. I just had a couple of questions on that because there's a residence to the south. And I think when I talked to Beth the other day, she said that the, the neighbor to the south has stopped by, so I think we might expect that they are gonna show up and ask questions, but first of all, the light fixture cut that they showed on the plan does not show the pole height for that particular light. You know, that, that should be done, that should be dimensioned, and the reason why it should be dimensioned is on the photometric plan that they provided, the photometrics are based not only on the intensity, the lumens of a light fixture, but it's also based on the height. Because it affects the, the isobar, the, the light distribution and where it spreads off to, so the pole dimension should be, should be dimensioned. I think we'd wanna know if that's a full cutoff light fixture, and again, that the photometric plan is reflective of that. It says on the photometric plan, it's got five foot candles, I believe it's less than five foot candles at the surface, but again, that depends on, you know, what the, what the height is. Again, the height should be identified. The light fixture also doesn't say what the lumen specification is, because that should, that again corresponds back with the isolux contours. Unless on the gullwing LED fixture, maybe it only has one lumen value to it. But many light fixtures have different lumens, I mean, back in the old days when they had wattage, you know, some are two hundred and fifty watts, some are five hundred watts, some are a thousand watts. So this light fixture, it really should be identified. In some commercial applications, it doesn't matter, but you've got a, you've got a residence to the, to the south who may raise the issue or the questions of, with new light fixtures being placed on the property, how's it gonna affect them? There are several low level bollard light fixtures along the driveway that are there right now, I think it's like seven or eight of them. The question is, are the low level bollard fixtures gonna be in addition to the new light poles? Are they gonna be taken out in substitution? I mean, they, they should identify, it's, it's not specified on the, on the plan, it wasn't clear. Also, you know, are there gonna be a new wall pack, like fixtures on the building? Again, wall packs, they give off a nice glare, unless they're gonna be under canopy lights, that would make a difference, so again, it's just, it's a question that they, they could probably easily, easily address. Under section eight point three on the parking. It suggested the parking space area required for multi-use in this particular zone is two hundred square feet per dwelling unit, so it's essentially one parking space per unit. So if you got sixteen units proposed, sixteen spaces would be required, the site plan does illustrate there's gonna be eighteen spaces. And basically, that's code compliant. Um, I guess I'm suggesting that from a practical standpoint, and this is just an observation, there's gonna be four studio units, there's gonna be eleven one bedroom units and one two bedroom unit. This location is, is not an urban setting, nor is it senior living, living, you know, it's a suburban location, meaning that, you know, there's a reasonably good chance that other than the studio apartments, either a husband, wife, boyfriend, girlfriend type household occupancies, are probably gonna be a younger demographic. And more likely than not, they're gonna, they're gonna have two cars. That's what a lot of households, households have now. This does not include any parking that might be expected for visitors who might come to the, come to the apartment building, it's only gonna contain eighteen spaces. I guess my point being is it's realistically and practically, seems like there should be more parking spaces provided. Any excess cars that are gonna come onto the site, either a two car family or, or, or visitors, they're gonna end up parking in the driveway, going up, going up or coming down the driveway, or they're gonna end up parking on the lawn. And that might be fine during the good weather, but as soon as you get snow in there, there's not gonna be any place available for this excess parking.
We've I've thought the same thing also, Conrad, but and Rick, when it's all said and done, it, it never seems to be an issue, for some reason, I hear what you're saying, it. We've had a bunch of these over the past few years and that one really doesn't, but we, we can discuss that some more, that, get this all out and we can research.
I mean, generally, in other, on the order, order, other ordinances, you know, granted, our ordinance says one space per, per unit. Many other towns in, in this area and in other areas, it's typically one point five spaces for dwelling unit or two spaces per dwelling unit, exactly for that reason. You know, I know I've seen apartments that have similar problems and they end up parking all over the place, but it does seem like there is a possibility, like when you look at the plan here. I mean, up in the, the north side, you could extend like three spaces on the north side, you could extend, you know, extend another three spaces on the south side, just to get you up to twenty four spaces, that would give you the one point five.
That could be good.
If the code is code and that's the way it's gonna be applied, nothing you can really do about it, but this is.
We, we can have, um, we, we can definitely have conditions, so that could be a condition.
Yeah, this is a special permit, so it's, it's not like it's a, it's not by right, it is a special permit, so.
They're reducing the number of units that are there, but I think the change in use could likely increase the per unit number of vehicles.
Yeah. I, I think so, at least in my prior life, I mean, I've had experience with these kind of things and you know, soon you get a household with two, two cars and, you know, people start showing up for visitors and stuff, there's no place to park, you know, what happens, but.
Yeah.
Again, this is a, it's just an observation. Just looking quickly, I mean, it appears that the ITE trip generation and the LUC codes, then the interpretation they got is very rational, very sound. With the representing for municipal services impacts, this seems very minimal from a site plan approval standpoint. On the site plan, it does suggest it's supposed to be some new proposed planning islands, break up the, the parking field, I don't know if you guys get into what what species are put into these planters or low, I mean.
We, we do require a landscape plan, yes, and we don't get real particular about it.
I'm just saying, this particular plan doesn't, it doesn't have a landscape plan, it just shows where the planters would be, but doesn't itemize what the, what the landscape features would be, so again, it's just just an item.
Where are they in fact, Conrad, do you recall?
They're right then, right in the corners of both buildings, I'm sorry, the one building to the north of the one side of building, right where the, the cars intersect or where the, the ninety degree angle is in the, in the north side and the ninety degree angle in the south side. I'm sure if we had the plan, I could show you better, but.
It's alright, I can wait, thanks.
Yeah. They are showing a dumpster up in the north, would be the northwest corner, I was just wondering, you know, is that gonna be a new dumpster enclosure, or is that gonna be an existing one, just, it's not saying one way or the other. You know, what are they gonna do with the old, with the old freestanding pylon sign, is that gonna remain, is it gonna be removed, is it gonna be, you know, something new put in? It, it doesn't, it doesn't show up on the plan and doesn't say what their, what their plan is on that. On the west elevation, on the elevation plans, on the north side, there seems to be a door on the lower level. I'm just not sure what that's for. And just kind of like a side note here, not that it has anything to do with us, but, and it's gonna be a building permit matter, but on the, I think it's unit number one, there's a studio apartment, you don't have a secondary means of egress on that, maybe it's maybe it's not required because it's a less than square footage, I don't know, but on the unit sixteen, which is the, the second story over the main part of the building, that's a two bedroom unit. They're not showing any secondary means of egress on that either, but again, it's a building inspector thing, not ours, but, you know, just a couple of observations. I'm done.
Okay, well, um. Do you have that, I assume, Conrad, and already printed out?
Yeah, I got it in a word file, yeah.
Yeah, could you, could you send that along to us?
Yeah.
Would you mind?
Send it to everybody or just to Beth?
Either way you wanna do it, you could send it to the whole board, then we, we have it and we can, you know, do our own research also on it.
Yeah.
But I'd like to make sure that the applicant gets a chance to see this pronto, too.
Yes.
Can Beth forward it to the applicant, please?
Sound good, Beth? I don't have you on screen, I'm gonna get rid of.
Yeah, I'll get, um, the recording by tomorrow and I can send them the recording of the meeting also.
Great, that's the best.
Okay.
But go ahead and send the, the word file to, to everybody, then, right?
Yep, and Beth will send it on to the applicant so they can address the issues, so that's, that's really good. Yeah, I think ours, ours is a small part of this, I think the selectmen have a bigger portion of the multifamily. There's some issues there, but uh, they, they, they have a lot of leniency and, and I don't know, leniency is the right word, but with it being a pre-existing non-conforming use and changing the pre-existing non-conforming use, they can do certain things legally, which is interesting, so.
Okay, but you gotta remember also, you got a site, a planning board site plan approval, that's one element.
Yes.
Planning board special permit is another element.
Yep.
Then you got the special, you got special permit selectmen for the, for the multifamily, so.
Correct.
I'm assuming we have to address also those findings as they relate to the non-conforming use, correct?
Correct, there's five findings, if they, you know, the big one being if it's more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing. Yep.
Well, Buck, are you talking about the six point one findings or the general findings for all special permits?
They overlap, yes.
Yeah, there's two findings in six point one B, I think.
There is.
And one of them is the one you just described.
Yep.
And then there's a set of five that's for other kinds of special permits, and we've, sometimes we've done all seven. And we proposed to change the bylaw so that in six point one B, we would only do the two. But the bylaw has not been approved yet by the AG, so we have to decide whether to do two or seven, when we do a six point one B case.
Anybody else, any comments on this?
Actually, I was wondering, um, the parking to me was an issue, I mean, they may be able to, you know, adjust it. That was an issue, and then I was wondering about, had they, have they gotten the fire and the the fire chief there and?
DPW?
The DPW there, yes, all of those, I guess, would have to look at it, too, I think, be a good thing, and is, they're from Great Barrington, I believe, Ecos Properties. I looked them up a little bit, even though I'm not gonna be at the full meeting, and I was wondering, will anyone live there representing them? Or not, it doesn't matter, I mean, they can have it either way, I guess.
My guess would be not, and also, we've, we've circulated this site plan and everything to all boards, including DPW.
Alright.
And we've got no, no reply from anyone.
Alright.
Beth? Yep.
And would they be upgrading the apartments in any way, do you know, would that be anything we could just ask, or?
That'd be building, building commissioner.
Okay, the building commissioner?
I don't know what you mean by upgrading, Peg, but they explained that they're reducing the number of units, so I think they're gonna knock out most, if not all, of the partitions and repartition the whole structure with larger units. Sometimes a lot, a lot larger units.
Yes. Well, I was just curious, because.
I don't know if that's what you meant by.
I imagine from the sixties, it was what, sixty-three, sixty-four, there would need to be some upgrading, that's all.
Well, when they said that they're gonna be, they, by doing all this, they're coming under new codes, which may also address.
Yes, okay, thank you, good.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Buck, one thing.
Yes.
I think we, we talked to Jeff Coleman and about the Eagle Mill with parking down there. And we came up, also, we thought they were gonna be short. But he came up with, I believe, a development in Holyoke, very similar. Oh, they went bigger parking and most of parking places sit vacant. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, I, I, I can see more than one, but, you know, far less than two for each place.
I agree.
So it's just that, you know, as I say, I, I don't wanna get into a massive parking lot that's never gonna get used for the number of units that are involved.
What do you think, bounce that off of Jim Scalise from SK when we get him?
Yep, I think that's a great idea, because he's the one, I think, explained the Eagle Mill.
Yeah, cuz I, you, you know, just coming to mind recently, the ones we worked with is the Veterans Home on East Street. And we were very skeptical, they did a one, one to one on that, and then Prospect Street, the old nursing home. And, and both we'll have to remember, both of those, if you guys recall, the resistance from the neighborhood that we had. You know, I'm over in the East Street area and, you know, that was gonna be crackheads and strippers walking up and down the street. I mean, I haven't seen any of that.
Buck, I'm still looking for them.
Well, geez, you know, the, I mean, but, but we got in, we got Andy Williams right there and, and that's just so delightful to see every day. It's trying, but boy.
I don't know what happened in that corner.
Yeah, yeah, well, they're, yeah, your old properties, he's, I call that the Andy Williams starter kit.
Okay, point taken.
But that's, it's, you know, it is what it is, the, the guys try, they just, you know, everybody has their right to how their yard is. You know, the, the whole neighborhood came out with torches and pitchforks on the Veterans Home. And I, I don't know if we're gonna see the same thing on this one or not. Just, but none of it really comes to reality. You know, so, okay, if no one has any other things about it, we'll move on to discussion about the master plan. Beth, how many interested people have we come up with?
Not including planning board members, we have eight.
We have eight, and we, we planned on doing a nine-person board?
For some reason, I thought it was eleven, but.
I thought it was eleven, too, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I remember eleven. And everyone's seen, have we circulated the names of the, all of that, or we had a few new ones come in?
I only shared it with you and Chris Brad.
I'm sorry, okay, I thought that went to everyone. So, it looks like we're very close to getting this going. Are there members of the planning board that would like to be on this committee?
Excuse me, Buck, sorry to interrupt, we have a person on the meeting that's Zoom listed.
Oh, yes, I did wanna address that, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I just.
No, Zoom user, can you identify yourself for the record?
Hi, my name is John McClure with Station Glow.
Say again?
John McClure with Station Glow of New England.
Okay, and.
I'm, I'm calling regards to the Sicko Gas Station.
Oh, okay, alright, gotcha, gotcha, okay, we'll be there in a few.
No worries.
Alright. There we go, Matt. I know, I was wondering that one, too. So back to master plan, Peter.
Yeah, I, I'll volunteer to do it.
Okay.
Do we have a list, do we have a list of interested parties, or?
Beth, do you have it there?
I, I, I don't think we should
Not yet.
Mention in a public meeting a list of candidates that may be, some of whom may be disappointed.
Okay.
And not get told, you know, until after a while. If they've been appointed, I think it's perfect, but.
Well, how do we, how do we discuss it, to accept them or not?
Yeah, well, it's the selectmen that are gonna do it, isn't it, or is it, or is it us?
No, it's us.
It's us?
I would think we have to talk about it openly.
Okay, alright.
Or, or do we do an executive session on it?
We could do that.
I'd like to, I don't know if we can. Yeah.
I'd like to do it that way.
That'd probably be more respectful way of doing it.
Yep. Beth, can you check on that, and we'll schedule, say fifteen minutes at the beginning of next meeting for executive session?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Could I also just tell you that I, knowing, I, I ran into Chris and Beth at the end of last week. I was down at Town Hall and saw, and I didn't see who was on the list, but I saw that there was a list, and I saw that it was short, so I've been doing a little recruiting of some of my neighbors who are good folks, and they're thinking it over and they may give their name. Couple of them, one or two may give a name to Beth to participate, we, do we have room for large members at this point, Beth?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
That's good. I think if, if I can persuade these two people, maybe three, to participate, I think it would be a lot of added value, so, but I won't mention any names tonight.
Yeah, and if, if anyone, I think that's the point where we're at, I mean, there's some really good knowledgeable people around town that I have not seen the name come up, they if you know know someone that you think would be valuable on this, please let them get in touch with Beth. Recruit them a little.
One, one guy, I don't know if he's gonna do it or not, he's lived in Lee part-time for forty years. But he votes in New York and he still has properties in both places, and he loves the town, and I know him pretty well from, from Ollie. Should he be disqualified because he doesn't vote here? I didn't think so, but I didn't really know what to tell him.
I don't know.
He, he could give an interesting perspective, for sure.
That's what I thought, you know, we have a lot of second homeowners and, and they don't vote, but they have a strong property interest in how the town develops, so I thought it was okay, but I just thought I'd check with you guys.
You know, being a second homeowner, I don't know, that, that might be a, a good resource right there.
I, I think a good candidate is a good candidate, and a little diversity with, is a good thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else talk about master plan?
People have been asking me what, what I think the schedule is and I've been telling them that I don't know, but. I would estimate six to twelve months. Does that seem reasonable, Buck?
Six to twelve, possibly up to eighteen.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Evening Gordon.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
You're okay, I thought I'd check in, so I was a little late.
Yeah, no problem. Moving on, sign permits. Let me get here. There's that one. This one doesn't show up. Oh, there we are. So this is their latest version.
And did Jonathan say he's here for Sitco?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Do you want to run through this, Jonathan?
Yes, we're, we're looking to image the canopy. This is the most recent Sitco image. And we're just trying to brand this gas station to Sitco compliance.
Gotcha. So anyway, that's what it looks like. We, and the, the question was last time that we didn't have this graphic with Sitco on there. And we didn't have this cut sheet, which gives us the. If I could get it, the square footage.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
There we go. So, looks like. Five point six. Roughly seven point six. And. Canopy signs. Canopy signs shall not exceed twenty square feet per side. It may be located on not more than two sides of the canopy. If a canopy is used as a price pod location, which this is not, ten square feet may be used as a logo. So we're well under that twenty square feet. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. Just for clarity's sake and square footage for the record, you have to include that triangle also because that's Sitco's logo. So just square footage of that and not just the square footage of the CITGO. So that should just be amended. So you're still way under the twenty, it's not a big deal, but I think for clarity, you need to add that.
I mean, roughly if you round up at six and eight, so we're at fourteen.
Yeah.
Adding the two.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah, I don't understand what I'm looking at. What is a trimark?
Right there.
Oh, so the word Sitco and that trimark will both be on one, two, three or four sides of the.
One side.
One side. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, now what about detail A and detail B? Is that part of the sign you guys or not?
No. It almost was. A few years ago.
So, let me just ask the applicant, please describe the lighting that's going to be. On the Sitco, on the trimark and what, if any, down lighting there's going to be.
This is a. It's a downlight, but it's more of a, it washes the canopy, it's more angled toward.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yeah, you're all broken up.
I couldn't hear it.
Yeah.
Hey Jonathan, you're all broken up. We. We really can't hear you.
Jonathan, I wonder if you should call in using your phone.
Well, I mean, here, here's what they're going to have.
It does. Beth, why aren't you? You're saying like outwards.
Well, there he goes. Now we got you. Okay, we missed pretty much all of that, Jonathan. You were all broken up. I think we've lost them. So, it's internally illuminated, Peter, and it, it looks like they're going to have a down light on it.
Yeah, I hope we're not going to get one of these, I hope we're not going to get one of these, you know, highly illuminated clouds over the town.
I think it is.
You think it is?
Yeah, because it's, it'll be, there'll be a rail underneath here, LED.
Yeah.
Conrad, jump in here anytime. I know you're pretty familiar with these things.
I'm not so much against the down lighting as I am against the, the lighting up of the whole, you know, forty, fifty foot thing that. Becomes sort of like a lit cloud over the town, you know, all during all dark hours.
Yeah.
Intensity.
Typically, the way these things work on that, like you've seen on detail B, that lip that you see there, that's a. It's a structure that holds a LED lighting underneath that, so it does wash the, the face of the, of the, of the face itself. That's why we were questioning last time when we were talking about this, you know, was that there? Because it wasn't really clear. So Conrad, which is the, I see it two, on the right side, I see two gray things that are one above the other. There's a red thing with an angle on it. Where's the lighting located? Is it in the upper part of the gray thing? Right, it's, it's, it's under that.
Right here.
See on the end where there's an overhang? So it's shining on the lower part of the gray area. Yeah, it's shining down and washing that, that side of the fascia. Okay, okay.
Jonathan, I think is back.
I hope I am. I drove down to a parking lot a little further down the road here, see if it works. I'm sorry about that, guys. I pulled over at full service and then it was gone.
You sound good now, so.
Awesome.
Breeze right there.
So our, our question is the, the down lighting? What that's.
Jonathan, I, I guess my real question is, what portion of this canopy is going to be brightly lit when viewed from the side?
The whole canopy fascia is illuminated. It shines down, it's angled towards the canopy fascia. But it's a soft light, it's not a bright light at all.
So is the light you're referring to exclusively the light? That is in the upper gray bar on the bottom right of the screen? Oh, you can't see the screen, can you? Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, on the bottom right of the screen I have, there's two, there's a rectangle with some red on the left and two gray bars on the right. And the gray bar, while you were away, I think we established that the upper gray bar is covering the light fixtures. And the lower gray bar will be washed by the light fixtures. Is that correct?
I'm trying, the lower gray bar, which, I'm sorry, which one are you talking about? The lower gray bar again? There's only a gray bar across the top.
Can you put your cursor on the lower gray bar, Buck?
Right here? Are you thinking?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's the actual ACM panel. That's the face of the can, that's the canopy fascia right there. They're just showing how the red bar, the, the bars above it. And that's just showing you the, how the red angle is supposed to fade with it to make it look like it's all one piece.
Okay, I don't really understand.
The lighting will be under in detail B, right? It'll be underneath that lip?
Correct.
So this is how the, the side of it's going to look, Peter. And right underneath this detail B is where the, the LEDs are going to be.
Okay, so what is it going to, it's going to shine, what, it's going to shine on the orange part?
All of it. It's going to be a strip of LEDs all the way down this.
Oh, correct. What is, if it's all the way down, then what does detail B reflect?
The, it's a lip that hangs out a couple inches.
Oh, it's just a typical detail of showing a forty-foot light row, okay. In other words, the entire fascia is going to be illuminated. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't like that. I don't really, I think those, those brightly lit canopies are a new innovation. That are very distracting and add a lot to the sort of clutter of, of light in town and obscure the night sky. And are visually distracting to motorists, which is of course what they're intended to be. And I don't know if there's anything that we can say about this. It may be beyond our authority. To try and make a demand to reduce this, but I don't like it.
I think agreed on all your parts. I, I like, I like seeing a station well lit underneath and clean. But yeah, some of them do get out of hand, even, you know, Big Y Express, that blue line they have was never in their original site plan.
And you know, to me, it looks like a forty-foot wide sign. I mean, you can read the letters, but, but. The whole thing is illuminated like it's all part of the sign.
Yeah.
Gordon's hand is up, maybe he can help us.
Are you still there, Gordon?
Yes, I am. Yeah. Usually somebody like Sitco or Texco, whoever the guest is, usually when they come up with this plan, they have a. A plan on the ground of what all the lumens are throughout the property and underneath the canopy. I don't know if he could supply that detail. Because you know, we have lighting requirements for not being too bright at certain boundaries. And one other issue you brought up before is this, this entire face used to be considered to be a sign because the color scheme is. Part of the color scheme of Sitco. So, so I think one of you two mentioned that years ago, this would have been a sign. The entire side would have been a sign, so they wouldn't have been allowed to do this on all four sides. Only two of the sides and they would have had to keep it to twenty square feet for the color scheme as well as the language, so. But yeah, see if they have a, a lumen footprint that they can supply from Sitco to show you just, I mean. Who knows what not very bright means to anybody? You know, we all interpret things differently and I hate to have one that looks like a UFO ready to take off. We have enough of those in town. That's all, thank you.
But can we deny it?
Well, you can ask for more information, ask for the lumen, you know, for, for the luminaire count on the ground. What, what is this going to do for the brightness on the ground? They'll have that, they already have it, I'm sure.
And that would be, Gordon, that would be at the edge of the property, wouldn't it?
It would be the entire, they usually give you the entire property showing you underneath the canopy and as it fades out toward the edges all the way to the. All the way to the boundary of the property.
But, but we only have a standard for the edge of the property, I think, so I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, no, I'm just, well, you only get to the edge of the property by knowing what's happening on the property, so, you know. So that's, that's all I'm saying is, you know, he can ask and see if Sitco will supply it. They almost always have these things. They know how bright it is.
Can I, can I ask either Buck or Gordon or anybody who knows, we were talking a minute ago about how things used to be in town. And that this, at one time, we apparently had the rule that this whole side would be a sign. And they, for the purpose of calculating area, and then we stopped doing that. And Buck or Gordon, tell me why we stopped?
No, it's not that we stopped. We, remember you, we, we wrote a new bylaw about that. Trying to make the design and the colors part of the sign and it got shut down pretty good.
But it always was that way, Buck. When did you, I mean, if you kept the language the way it was, you can go back and look.
We weren't, but it was just a sign that, it, it wasn't clear as to what was the sign and what wasn't. If you put this all on a, you know, on one color, what, what does it matter?
Well, if this, if this particular triangular red and orange shape is on every one of their canopies throughout the country. Then it's part of their logo of their business. And that way, it would have been before, that's what way we wrote the bylaw in late eighties, was that was going to be considered to be part of the sign. So they would just have a plain white canopy with the word Sitco in the triangle. And without all the fancy extra colors, because all of it's to distract you and grab your attention. The whole thing is a sign. Based on the color, but that was before.
I think we got challenged on that, Gordon.
I don't remember that at all.
Yeah.
Maybe we can look, maybe we can look into the history of that. I'd like to know, if we can't do that anymore, I'd like to know on what basis.
I mean, there's no way I, there's no way I could look at the, that entire side and say that that's the sign. Or, you know, how far do you go with it? You know, the Big Y sign is on a brown background and the entire front of the building is also brown.
Right.
So how do you do that? How do you differentiate?
I, I mean, I, I haven't studied the law in Massachusetts or the cases in Lee, but. It strikes me that a good portion of this canopy is going to be painted in the colors that are on this. Sitco tri, tri thing over here. So these are the company colors and it's being. They were selected, I'm assuming, to emphasize the importance of coming to Sitco to get your gas. And identifying that this is a Sitco station and making it more obvious to people who consciously or unconsciously identify these colors with Sitco. And so I, I don't have any problem thinking it's part of the sign. If we told them they had to paint it gray. They'd be furious. They would say it would be a terrible damage to their business. So that, it seems to me is, is good evidence that it's a sign.
We'll see if they have a, see if it's copyrighted, you know, that kind of a thing they may have done also. And in which case, it obviously then becomes the sign, the entire fascia.
Anyway, I need to look at the bylaw to see, you know, that, I'm just expressing it off the cuff here. I, I'm not sure where I could. Whether I have a basis to make that a vote or not yet.
Conrad?
Yeah, like what Gordon, Gordon was just saying here, when I was doing these gas stations back in the eighties and nineties in Lee. The Shell Station down, down in the Trump, I had a white canopy because that's all we were allowed. The mobile station up by Joe's Diner, that was a white canopy that did not meet the mobile standards, the branding standards. That was just a white canopy. We did the Lipton Station down on one oh two, same thing. Again, I'm talking about the late eighties and nineties. That's, no, no branding graphics were allowed back then. Now, I haven't done anything in town here for a while, but after, as time went on, I see where the mobile station down by the. Down by the, down by Joe's has now got the blue stripe. And it's got the same kind of lighting feature with a trough underneath that washes the, the side. The Shell Station went in with their, their yellow, yellow stripe and banding. I believe that's illuminated.
Really started it was when they went for the yellow. We didn't know how to deal with that.
Right, right. So somewhere along the way, the, the order must have changed, that it did allow, because that's not what it was allowed back in the late eighties.
And let's deny it. I'm fine with that. I really don't care with these anymore.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Conrad remembers correctly and I think that what you find is somebody comes in. More than likely, the yellow and blue stripe came in because somebody wanted to update their canopy. And just went to the building department and got a, got a permit through the building department just to change the canopy. And lo and behold, all of a sudden, the striping starts showing up, probably never went in front of the board for a vote. And therefore, it sort of progresses on its own without ever being actually reviewed and permitted through the planning department. That would be my guess of how this all started. But Conrad's exactly right and it was purposeful. To keep from having all this kind of thing in front of you right now, to keep everything toned down.
You know what else, Gordon? I remember when Friendly, when Friendly's was still in business, they did a makeover.
Yes.
And they did red trim.
Yeah.
And there was a big argument that that was, wasn't going to be allowed.
Well, the building, turn on the building, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't remember that discussion, but I know that they kept their pre-existing non-conforming sign forever. Because they didn't want to lose the square footage and, and they wouldn't have been able to use the typical Friendly's freestanding sign. Because it didn't meet our bylaw. So we've had many sign problems and issues in the past over this very issue. Anyway, that's all.
Go ahead, Matt.
Uh, thanks, uh, Mr. Chair. Um. I understand everyone's point. They're all good ones. I just feel like. Uh, the horse has already left the barn and now we're gonna, we're gonna penalize this, uh, Sitco. When all the rest have their own signatures. So. I personally wouldn't want to deny this, um, because of the colors. As, as being part of the sign. Um. So, and then the other thing about the lumens is I think we ran into with the, uh, Lipton down in. By, uh, Henning's, uh, place that, uh, our Lumen, uh, bylaw is kind of out of date, isn't it?
Uh, we, we have a wattage stuff. Yeah, that's, but then you can convert it to lumens.
And cover, okay, but, um.
Yeah, but, but it's, it is out of date because there's nothing about internally lit signs.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, you know, Peter's been. Uh, a big, strong voice on the gas stations and maybe we should look into it and I'm, I'm all for that. Um, and we have the addition of, uh, Conrad, who's got significant experience in, um. Uh, the gas stations and I think maybe it's time that we do look at a, a plan moving forward. But I don't think we should penalize Sitco at this point. Uh, since we've let all the other ones rebrand.
And that's just, not all of them, not all of them have rebranded. I don't.
Well, I mean, they all have their own brand. It looks like.
About half and half, I think. No, I mean, I think there's still some white canopies around. Couple.
Yeah. I mean, I, I happen, I don't mind it. I, 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 the lighting to me, every time I see a gas station, it looks clean, safe. The, the lighting is downward. I'm not saying there shouldn't be limits, um, but it doesn't, I mean, they're gas stations. I, I don't know. It just seems. Seems okay to me, but and, and this, this, these guys down on Sitco are. Cleaning up the property and making it look good. I, I actually think the canopy looks good, but it gets into the colors again and, and Buck, you brought up a good point. Big Y is all brown behind the sign. So do we say that that's part of their sign? Or, or just, I don't know. It kind of seems like we're going, going too far.
I'm, I'm trying to remember, we, we ended up having troubles with this. It, it was a constant debate and with all the sign companies that came in, and that's why we. And Peter, you were involved in it, um, early on and, and that's when we tried to put a definite. A definition in our bylaw. And, um, it, it couldn't get through. Um, but there was a reason why we went to that, uh, putting it in our bylaw.
Buck, I'm sorry.
Having trouble.
Your hands up, but I can tell you what I remember.
Yeah, okay.
I worked, there was a new sign by law and when I came to town and started getting involved, the. Town was looking to try to simplify it and I spent a while, a while. Um, trying to simplify it and then I, but I also put a new proposal in it, which was to try and. Count a building as part of a sign if it was in the company's colors. So if, you know, if they were going to paint the whole building this color, then that would be not allowed, but it only applied to. Large companies, I think with a certain amount of revenue or something like that. And people got really offended at. Having the part, one thing was having the zoning applied to the building's color. Which was, we should have, I should have foreseen, but the other thing was they got very offended. That it applied only to large companies, which was sort of completely unexpected to me. It was like, well, you know. If, if, if my, you know, uncle's donut shop can do this, why can't Dunkin' Donuts? And then, so they were sort of offended for Dunkin' Donuts and we took that part. We amended it on the floor and took that part out of the revised bylaw, which did get enacted.
Yeah, but it was also to do with these. That it would have covered us here.
Probably, probably so.
Yeah, uh, Conrad, sorry about that. We got.
That's right. Well, ju- just a couple of points here. Uh, the. First of all, the lighting issue, uh, I know you're talking about getting a photometric study from Sitco. Uh, that's going to be rather difficult because the photometrics are really going to be, what they would provide you as a company. Would be the photometrics for the under canopy lighting, because that's really where the lighting is. And that's what migrates, uh, off towards the property line. So. If, if we're going to ask them for. Uh, an isometric, not isometric, but a photometric, that's what they're going to give you. As far as the lighting, that's, uh, the LED lanes, it's going to wash the face. I think you're going to find that's, it really emits very little. Lumen exposure that would migrate off the site. All it's going to do is wash the side of the face directly. And that's not going to be a, uh, that's going to be, not going to be a light migration issue. The other issue is. The tri mark that's on the, on the exhibit here, um, the original plan's at a forty-two inch tri mark. Uh, now I think it's something smaller. Uh, we, do we know if that's going to be illuminated yet or not? That's a, that's a question. Uh, we know what the size, we know that the square footage is going to be.
It is illuminated.
All right, it is illuminated. All right. So that's, that's got to be, that's known. The other thing is, is that tri mark. Actually goes up above the canopy. Canopy top, let's call it. Um, you can have a code, your code requirements for buildings is you can't have a sign. That, uh, goes above the, above a roof line. Are you gonna, are you gonna take this as the same, same, uh, same argument? Does that canopy with the tri, or the tri mark does go above the canopy? Should that be allowed because it's above the, the level of the roof or should they be allowed to have a tri mark but have it? So it's lower, it's even with the rest of the fascia. Just an observation.
It's good.
What's anybody think?
I don't think it's a roof. Well, maybe, I maybe it was, but, but. Conrad, if we bring it up, if we bring that up, we make that objection, they can just make the whole thing a foot taller, right? And just raise, raise the roof level and then we, then instead of having. X vertical feet of washed side, uh, canopy, we have X plus one vertical feet of washed canopy, right?
Well, then I could do that because the H E M panel's already been installed.
Oh, oh.
And they're already attached in a certain fashion to the canopy, to the steelwork. So I, I doubt that would be the case.
Well, I guess the question is, is a canopy a roof?
Well, where I come from, it is. Right? It's, it's a cover.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's no doubt it's a roof. It's the way, it's the way you, you get a permit for it.
So is that a roof sign, Gordon?
Yeah, um, I'm not, I'm not saying on the fascia. I'm not saying it is. I think Conrad's point is the part that sticks above the uppermost part would be not allowed. They could also maybe lower it out and, you know, I, I. I guess I'm not splitting that detail because I know that before it's about if it's attached totally above, that was one of the problems that we were having. They're trying to put them, actually mount them up on the angled. Roof shingle line to get more visibility. That, that was the problem we were trying to take care of, not this particular issue.
Jonathan's got his, Jonathan's got his hand raised, Mr. Chair, just.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
I just wanted to let you guys know that is a forty-two inch fascia now, which is why we went with a thirty-seven. To keep it contained inside the fascia, so it doesn't stick up anymore.
Oh, good.
That's why we changed it. I'm sorry. That, that should have been changed. That's my apologies there.
Well, I'll take care of that.
Right.
Makes care of that one.
And Jonathan, one other question on that Sitco, on this, the Sitco letters, are those individual channel letters?
They are.
Okay, and is the, is the square foot dimension? For that Sitco, is that the tri, is that the, uh, rectangle around those five letters or is that the summation of the? Uh, individual letters, the, uh, square inches converted to square feet.
Of each. That's each individual letter.
No, that's not right. See, you can't do that. It's got to be the rectangle around the Sitco sign.
Okay.
Follow me?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if that Sitco, whatever that dimension is going to be. And with the summation of the, uh, the tri mark, those two elements can't exceed twenty square feet, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
He's probably okay. He's probably still okay though, right? Cause he's got plenty of headroom.
It's gonna be close, probably.
Gonna be close.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be close.
I mean, what, what'd you get their calculation there? As long as it's the summation doesn't exceed twenty square feet, I think everybody agrees it's going to be okay, right?
No, I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to vote for another nighttime cloud above Lee. A lighted cloud. I may be the only one, but I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, if he's, if he meets the twenty square feet, I mean.
Oh, no, I, I think that the twenty square feet is fine and, um, but I think. Um, I would, I mean, my real objection is to the lighting of these things at night. That. The, the down lighting on the ground is one thing that I think is a, something that we have to live with and in many ways is desirable. But. Lighting up, uh, how lo, how wide is this thing? Jonathan, how wide is, how long is this thing?
This is ridiculous.
About thirty feet or so?
I believe it was thirty-two by twenty-four.
Okay, so it's a thirty-two foot wide sign, really. And, um, and if it wasn't lighted at night, I wouldn't object really. I, I don't really care about the color as much as I care about the lighting, but the blue lighting over. The mobile station at the north end of town is really awful in my view and, and I. Think I voted for it, but I so regret it because when I come down the hill from Laurel Lake. Coming down Route twenty and you come to the bridge and this blue, you know, bright blue cloud is floating above, you know, the town of Lee. I just don't think it's consistent with what I want the town to be. So I'm not going to vote for it if it's lit like that.
Peg, is that, um, agreeing with Peter or you want to talk about something?
I was just going to say, I know I have a totally different view, but, um, at night when you're driving. I said this before, I like to see the lights. I understand what you're saying, Peter, um. But it's also sometimes somewhat, if you're a woman along driving at night, it's nice that the place is. Um. You're able to see and feel safe there. Now, maybe I understand to the other side of the issue. Uh. But I also do feel that unfortunately, uh. The other things that are there on Husatonic Street are quite bright and, um. I think we should look at the bylaw and make it.
Yeah. I sort of am persuaded by Matt's comment about the horse being out of the barn, but here's what I'm thinking, Matt. If we approve this, then really a majority of the gas stations in town have already got this lit canopy. And we can, we can fiddle with the bylaw all we want. We're not going to go back and undo this once it's approved. I, I wish we could, but I don't think that's possible. And so really there's not much point if, you know. We let one more of those horses out of the barn. I don't think there's much point in even arguing about the bylaw anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree, uh, I, I agree with, um, well, you just, your explanation. I. I kind of think it's too late to be quite honest with you. That's where I'm, I'm at.
Okay.
Cause how are we, how are we going to go back on the, the, we can't go back on the, the few that have already upgraded and.
No, but, but we could, we could, uh, start with this one.
Yeah, I don't want to, but I, I'm, you know, I respect everyone's opinion.
Well, why don't you make a motion now?
Well, if the chair is ready for one, but.
I don't know.
Um.
We need it, we need a new calculation on the tri mark.
Definitely do.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so we have that and, um, I. Boy, I hate to write more zoning again, but we're going to have to, I, I think, um.
Well, maybe we should re, re, revisit Peter's signed by law and, and that's, uh. A, a good start, a good foundation and, and, you know, bring it again.
You know, the, the down lighting is like, like Peg was saying, as far as safety, um, I, I don't think we're, we'd be able to touch that. If we do, that could be a slippery slope, but this, uh, you, you know. Like he said, putting this giant halo over every gas station.
Fine.
You know, the. I've become accustomed to it, but, but I understand what you're saying, Peter. I- is that a good way to describe it? A, a big halo, right?
Yeah, that's better than a cloud. Yeah.
Yeah.
Clouds aren't lit up, but halos are. Yeah.
Yeah.
Another argument here, guys, another argument might be is, uh, if you, if you're trying to compare this with other gas stations. If you're looking at the mobile. Down on one oh two, you look at the Shell Station, uh, you look at some of these other gas stations. A lot of these are really in the commercial area. There's not a lot of residential activity around it. What if I recall has got a house to the right, it's got a house to the left.
Yeah.
It's got houses across the street.
That's true.
I mean, that's, that could be another concern or another element to.
Good point, Conrad. I think that's part of my reaction is that I feel like the, the area around the Shell Station and the McDonald's is kind of a lost cause. And, you know, we proudly call ourselves the gateway to the Berkshires, but good God, what a gateway that is, huh? But, but if we can contain it down there, you know, the, the brightly lit, you know, extremely sort of. I don't know. I think of it as like Dallas, you know, it's like Lee's little portion of Dallas. Uh, but if we can contain it down there and not let it creep up the rest of Husatonic Street, I think that's a plus.
Do we happen to know if this is operating twenty-four hours or is it limited hours now?
Don't know.
I think they close at eleven.
Alright.
Dave Forrest has his hand up, Buck.
Yeah, Dave.
Uh, I think we beat this horse pretty much to death.
Uh, oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, uh, I do not believe the Sitco came to the tunnel Lee with special signage and lighting and. They must have a national standard they go by. Uh, if they could, any, any other gas station comes into the tunnel Lee, I think in the future. We should look and see it's that there is a national standard. We can control, I, I agree with Peter that we don't need. Bright, bright lights, but we need enough lighting for safety, for on-site safety. Uh, and when it comes to looking, you know, everybody looking at gas stations. Unless you need gas, most people pay very little to no attention to a gas station. They just drive by and look what they want to see next, whether it's a landmark, uh, a building, whatever. But, uh, I, as I say, I really think that there's a national standard these people use. And long as it's, uh, close to, you know, as it is in a, uh. Get an eyesore from the town, uh, I don't think we should, uh, raise the ruckus. We try to do every time we have a gas station with a canopy over.
Does everybody agree that the graphics are okay as long as it wasn't illuminated?
I like it. I actually like it. I actually think it looks.
Yeah, I do too.
And I don't mind the lights. So that's just me. I just want, Buck, I just want to say one thing, you know, that is our commercial business corridor.
It is.
So we have, and you know, I, I actually get my gas here, uh, at times and, uh, they've got now that chicken in there. Okay, uh, I, I, I haven't had much of the chicken. I, I have tried, not too much, um. But I notice a lot of people walking down the sidewalk that come into that store. So, I mean, you know, the residents use it. And I, I don't remember everyone complaining about this gas station. Have we had any complaints about the lights or anything like that? Affecting them when they're living, you know. Sleeping at night, the lights bother them.
Might be something to look at. I, I don't know.
It just seems like they're all, they're, they're always, they're always down like, it seems like they're always down on the site. And actually it's kind of nice when you drive down there at night. Cause it's all dark right there with all mixture of, of businesses and residential homes and. And then you've got some light there. So I, that's just another take on it. I'm not saying it's, it's right or wrong, but.
Anyway, either way, we need a measurement on what that Sitco rectangle is. Um, so if anyone has a, uh.
I, I would make a motion to, to, to endorse. Uh, this applicant, uh, uh, the sign permit for the Sitco on Husatonic Street. As long as the, um, tri mark. Uh, and Sitco, uh, lettering is under the twenty square feet or, or twenty square feet or less. Um, but I think we need a good wording on that because I'm not seeing it correctly to.
Yeah, we can't, we, we don't do that until we see it, Matt.
Okay, alright. That's fine too. So Jonathan, uh, has got to get us that.
Yep.
So I moved the table until the next meeting.
I'll second.
Second by Matt, uh, do a roll call vote. Peg.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Um, Jonathan, we're gonna need to know what that measurement is around the whole Sitco, okay?
And tri-mark.
Okay.
And the, well, the tri-mark he had. The area.
Don't we have to do in between the tri-mark and the Sitco?
That's true. That, that would be the whole thing, yes.
With Conrad's? No, no, Conrad?
No.
Okay.
Why do you say no? Huh? Why do you say no?
What do you guys think? Is this the sign? Or is this a part of the sign? And is this the part of the sign?
Well, typically, whatever I've always seen it is the triangle would be one, one, uh, calculation and the rectangle around the Sitco, uh, text would be another, be another.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's again, as long as you got twenty square feet between the summation of the two is the way, that's the way I would interpret it.
That's, and that's usually how we've done it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we have there.
Jonathan, you good on that?
Yes, thank you, and I'll have that sent in to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm starting to second guess, uh, our bylaw passing all the signs off to the building department.
I can't wait.
No, but I mean.
I'm second guessing it.
I mean, it's, it'll be less for us, but we're really gonna have, we're really gonna have to review. I, I know it says in our bylaw, but we're really gonna have to review the approval of these signs, um, so that it doesn't get loose.
Well, and, and this illumination, I tell you, is, is new. Um, because of the advent of the LED strip light. You know, we, they never really had a way to, to illuminate these before. And now with LED lighting, they, they can do it so efficiently.
Well, the way they use aluminum is they used to have, actually have neon, neon light bulbs going down with zero, uh, zero starters in them for winter use. And then you'd find that, uh, you know, an eight-foot strip or a twelve-foot strip would, uh, would expire. And now you got this big blank up there and part of it's illuminated, part of it wasn't. So this LED, LED stuff is really, uh, it's a, it's a great technology for this type of thing and it'll last a long time.
And I guess that, that'll be a discussion. Are we gonna, um, put in our bylaw that we will no longer allow the, the outside of the canopy to be illuminated?
Do you want to put it, do you want to put it on the agenda next time and I'll recirculate what, what I said around the last time we talked about this?
Um, yes, I think so, Peter. Um, the only, I, I don't know if we can get into ground lumens too much because then, then you're getting into a public safety thing.
Well.
As long as it, but we do, and we do have dark sky initiatives, a- as long as we acknowledge that, the dark sky.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can have quite a lengthy conversation about ground lumens, but, um, just for, to be very brief of explanation for Conrad and others, um, I went around with my little iPhone and a app that measures light more or less accurately, I suppose. And I, I just drove in under the gas areas of various gas stations and in town, and they vary quite a bit. I think Sitco is actually one of the best, but they, they vary up to a very high level of lighting, like the Sunoco down, uh, on Park Street is very high. Um, and they, I think it was like a factor of three to one from one gas station to another, and it wasn't visually obvious to me that one was going to be higher than the other when I drove in. They all looked just really bright. But it turned out that one of them was three times as bright as the other. So I think there's some room to discuss this, you know? It might be possible to have a lighting limit that makes female drivers feel safe, but not be so light, so bright that, you know, that nobody next door can see any stars.
Do you, do you remember what the foot candle values were at these various places?
Um, I don't remember it. I think I wrote it in an email, but I, I don't remember it.
They usually try to keep it around fifty to sixty foot candles in, in generally.
Yeah, if I can find it, Conrad, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Uh, Gordon?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Um, just a, a, a thought based on something that Matt said a few minutes ago, which I think is, uh, is actually a very valuable, uh, comment. And that is, I think that the, uh, planning board should ask the building department, both the commissioner and municipal inspector, local, to come in and meet with you to talk about some of these very critical issues and how you have looked at them in the past. And I think a good healthy discussion because they're both fairly new at zoning issues and, you know, it might be a, a good time to have that discussion and raise all those points. They can take some notes and, and have in the back of their minds some of the issues, especially sticking point issues like this one, you know, and understand what the board has done in the past so they can make their own path going forward. But I think that a, a, a good communication between the two before they, you know, approve something and then it goes to you and you get hold of them and say, why did you, you know? Discussion ahead of time is always valuable.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Good. Yeah.
Thank you.
And because we're going to be turning this over eventually to them, the signs.
And by the way, um, I think we just found out that the attorney general last Monday, uh, this last Monday approved all our zoning changes at the town meeting. You could check with Chris Britton. That was my understanding of something he told me during the selectmen's meeting.
Oh.
You're saying.
Gordon, that's not what I heard from him last Friday. And I was there, I was there and, and Beth heard this, so Beth, you stop me if I'm getting it wrong, but, um, after all this time, the attorney general has reacted to our first set of bylaws. And the reaction is that we didn't properly notice in the newspaper, the advertisement for the town.
You gotta be kidding me.
The bylaw, all we said was regards to, Beth, what did we say? Just with regards to zoning?
Uh, basically, we were not specific enough in the newspaper posting. Um, they're saying it's too vague. Um, Jeremiah is on it. He's in contact with them and we're hoping that it'll be okay. We're hoping they're just looking for a little more time.
But.
Okay.
Beth checked with Great Barrington and Lennox before she drafted that ad. And she followed their advice, so there's no, no blame to cast at her, but we are still, still in limbo. And, um, there's a procedure for the attorney general to approve something that has this kind of a problem.
Right.
But, but the procedure involves putting another ad in the newspaper and, um, waiting for clay, uh, claims to be made. I think the claim.
Right, yeah.
And if there are no claims, then the attorney general can approve it, notwithstanding the alleged failure in the first instance.
And even if in the future, in the future, Beth may want to, um, make sure she runs that by Jeremiah, just, just to be, even though she ran it by Lennox and Great Barrington.
We did run it by Jeremiah.
Well, that's what I figured. Okay, I, I mean, we always have, right?
They're probably just mad, they're probably just mad because we kept asking them.
Well, that could be a different issue right there. Um, anyway, uh, uh, but, you know, that's, so that's interesting because that's totally different than what I was told on Tuesday night. So, all right, well, I'll check in with Chris and we'll go from there. Thank you.
I don't know about anyone else, but I can't wait to talk about ground lumens.
It's gonna be thrilling.
Sounds, sounds exciting. Maybe we should.
Get it right.
Maybe we should do it on a Saturday night or something.
Photometrics.
Ground, ground, ground lumens in the third.
Oh, boy.
Mm-hmm. You can look at photometric designs of buildings. I'll, I'll bring those in for you. Those are.
It's better and better.
Yeah. I let the estimators mess with that. All right, moving on, minutes. Uh, we have minutes for July eleventh.
Motion to approve the July eleventh minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Peter?
Abstain for absence.
Gotcha. Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. That's all we had for minutes, right, Beth?
Are they staying up now? Our minutes staying?
They were up until I went away to Maine, came back from Maine and they're all back down.
Oh, goodness.
Wow.
Uh, but they're going back up, so.
Beth, speaking of the website, um, what, since we're organizing a master plan committee, I thought it might be useful to have on the town website if it's not already there, the existing master plan and the existing recreation plan. Can those be put on our planning board website link?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Okay. Um, any other, uh, discussion unforeseen?
Uh, when, uh, our, our, sorry, Dave, our, our next meeting is going to be August second with the select board, correct? Or no?
That's correct, and it's in person at six o'clock.
Okay, gotta be in person or?
Yes.
I think we might be set up for hybrid. I'll double check.
Just, just put on your pants and, and come to the meeting.
Burn it all, okay.
I know you're sitting there in your boxers.
Um, no, uh, that's, no, I just, I love Zoom, so, but, uh, as you know, but, um, yeah, if it's in person, it's in person. Um, we're gonna have a lot of, lot of people at the table. That's all I was thinking.
What, what is, uh, especially with, you know, the plan, if we go over, I mean, they're supposed to have their select board meeting afterwards. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll be lucky to get all this done.
Yeah.
So we might, we might be continuing.
So Buck, you, you should work out with the chair of the selectmen and what the agenda is going to be about which motions win. I think it's gonna be, um, site plan approval, six-one B, special permit, and then their action. But we should, we should allow for a common presentation in the front to save the applicant time. Let them explain their app, their application before any of us starts, um, taking motions for, for action. Do you agree?
I agree. So all presentation and discussion will be even before we do the site plan, you think?
That's what I think. And then we vote, you know, one, issue one is site plan, issue two is six B one or six-one B. Issue three is, is multifamily.
Yep.
With different boards voting. Does that make sense to everybody?
Well, when would people, if somebody wanted to come to the meeting, when would they be allowed to speak?
Public comment.
In the beginning of the meeting?
No, no, no. In a special permit hearing, you turn it to the public for public comments.
Yep.
After.
After all the board members.
After all the board meet, after all the board speaks. No, because there may be people that would like to come to the meeting.
Oh. If you want to do that, then maybe there should be, step one is just the, the applicant presents. Step two is board members comment from either board. Step three is public comment and step four is motions and action. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
It sounds like a better way.
I mean, it's sort of the way we do it anyways.
That's how we've usually done it, yep.
Yeah.
We go, remember going right around the table for planning board and then we open it up to the public.
Right.
Yep.
They do all this in an hour, huh?
That's what they're telling me. I, I got a feeling it might be continued, so.
Well, it is, it is.
Because the applicant, they've got to make their presentation first on the, uh, the site plan issues. I'm sure the attorney is going to make his comments.
Yes.
Yes.
So Conrad, do you think we should separate it by, by site plan first? Beginning to end, then special permit, beginning to end, then special permit, beginning to end? Is that?
I think so, because basically you gotta have the site plan elements, uh, resolved before it can go to the, at least before it goes to this, uh, board of selectmen, because they're supposed to have a, they're supposed to have your comments and your, uh,
Well, it would, but, but don't you think all discussion is gonna bring that out?
I, I thi- I think the general discussion is going to bring it all out. Yeah. Personally, but I can see both sides of the process.
To be honest with you, I, I've never seen, I'd never seen a joint hearing between a planning board and a, and a, uh, and a board of selectmen at the same time for the same application. It's always been, planning board does their part. Board of selectmen, in fact, board of selectmen doesn't even get it until after everybody else gets their shot at it.
Right.
Usually, they don't even see any of this stuff until everybody's motions are made, approval paperwork sent.
Well, it's not really a joint hearing.
Yes, it is.
It's, it's a sequential hearing.
Hmm.
Uh, is it really?
I don't know.
I guess it depends how we do it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe this will be the last time it's a joint hearing.
Oh, I agree. There are a lot of issues in, in joint hearings. Who chairs, who makes motions?
Right, exactly, exactly.
A lot of things to work out.
Well, well, maybe the planning board should do their part first, as, as Conrad was thinking, or I think he was thinking, and do site plan and, um, special permit. And then we should turn it over to the select board and get out of the chairs and leave.
The applicant's, the applicant's presentation can be done jointly in front of everybody.
Everybody.
If he does that, then the planning board, they hit their part for the, uh, approval, then.
Hand it over to the select board.
Right, but, and, but planning board is going to do the site plan approval and their special permit.
That's right.
They can do that at the same time, in front of the selectmen.
Right.
Right, and then the selectmen will do it, right?
And we, we can actually get up and leave after, after we're done for the special permit. We don't have to stay there.
Effectively, yeah.
I'm thinking this one, um.
Because we really shouldn't, we shouldn't really get involved in deliberating with the select board once, well, we're gonna be sitting there listening to their, um, rationale on the multifamily.
But you have to deliberate on these.
Right.
Uh, non-conforming.
Existing, non-conforming, right. And, and I think we're gonna have a problem first off, right, with the public on that one, because they're gonna want to talk about the number of units right away, so.
I don't see this working in an hour.
No, I don't either, but, um, but, you know, if we, if we stay to what our, what our focus is, what our scope is, um, and then let the select board deal with the, the, um, the multifamily part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And that may be the continuance.
Yeah, well, that, then that could overflow into their meeting.
That's true too, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that'll, that'll be the plan. We'll, um, or, till I talk to the select board. We'll, uh, we'll let the applicant do their presentation. We'll do the site plan, do our special permit, and then probably another section of, uh, let the select board do their multifamily special permit.
Do you need town council there?
I think they're gonna be there, yes. Yeah, for, he's usually questions. When somebody has a question, he'll clarify. Yeah. All right.
Uh, I guess, anything else? August, August second, six o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Anyway, wait one minute. Hold on, hold on. Uh, did we get our letter down to Starbucks about the dumpster case? Because, man, I'm getting a lot of people were wanting to know. And we have to hire dumpster police to enforce it?
Yeah, it's been open.
Open a lot. Beth, did we, um, did, did we send, uh, a friendly letter down to them or something?
Talk to the building.
I had the building department do it.
Okay.
Every time I drive by, it's shot.
Okay.
They must know you're coming.
Well, I'm there every day.
Well, that's pretty good then.
I've seen it both.
I've seen it both.
Last thing, I took Jeff Cohen up on his offer. Took a down, a look in the mill.
Yeah.
Uh, his son-in-law took me through. Uh, it's still very stable, that's all I can tell you. Uh, how long it's gonna last, uh, that was my biggest emphasis. Uh, you gotta do something, you gotta do it soon. Uh, there's some major beams that failed in the old union mill, but, uh, nothing that's, uh, affecting, uh, stability right now. Uh, the building itself was left, it's, it's decrepit, the, this condition of the building with the demolition, whoever the last owner was, the way they left it. I mean, there's piles of asbestos, there's piles of, uh, every, you know, they were worried about lead paint. It's probably lead paint from the beginning of the, uh, phase one to the end. Uh, and also they have, because they. Uh, and also they have, because they dragged down some of the lighting fixtures. Uh, now we got, uh, mercury contamination. So, uh, it's just that this thing, it, as I say, I was very happy to see just how well it's doing. But I can't give you a timeline of how long it's gonna last. Uh, and I don't know if many of the board have ever been in that old mill. Uh, but at the phase one only goes up to the machine room where the actual paper machine was. So that leaves all of the machine room and the Butler buildings for another phase. Uh, and the son-in-law is the one who gave me the tour and he kept talking about low income housing. Uh, and I said to him, I don't remember any low income housing, bro. Oh, yes.
He was just misspe, he was just misspeaking. It's affordable housing.
Okay, that, well, that's what I said. I asked him that. And he said, oh, I, I think you're wrong. So, uh.
Some, some people use the term interchangeably.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, lastly, I asked him about the demolition of the houses. And I got another answer. The answer was the police chief and the fire chief want the houses down. Uh, I still disagree. I mean, last time, uh, Jeff told us that, uh, he needed them for parking. Uh, it, it was just an order, uh, the order that has to be done to begin construction. Well, again, that didn't hold up. So, uh, I just, I, I, when I left. Uh, he said to me, if anybody wants to come back, if you have more questions, uh, I'll answer anybody's questions. He was very knowledgeable. But, uh, I said, you have to do something, you have to do something. So, uh, townspeople are very sick of hearing. The same statement. Uh, we have to be able to do it in six months. It'll be the fall or it'll be in the spring. Uh, I said, time marches on and this old building is not going to march on with you forever. Eventually there's going to be enough, because the roofs are bad, they are leaking in. Eventually you're going to have. Uh, enough destruction in the building itself that it'll become unstable. And then we're going to end up with a pile of rubble. So, but he was, they were very good. Uh, I was very satisfied with what I saw.
Dave, the, the, um, the main building on Riverside actually has two names, right? There's like the union.
That's right. The first one you come to is called the Union Mill.
And is that upstream or downstream?
That is downstream.
Okay. And then what's the other one called?
The Eagle.
Okay, so you said part, do, do I understand you're right that one of those is not going to be in phase one?
Uh, probably better than half of the Eagle will not be in phase one.
Are they going to stabilize it or something in phase one? I had the idea that all of the Riverside buildings were going to be dealt with in phase one.
No. Uh, the first one, the first phase will be the Union Mill, which is the oldest section. Uh, it has some low ceilings effect. They have plans to drop the floors to get head height for the apartments. Uh, and it's all wood beams. There's no steel or anything in it. The Eagle has, is a newer construction. With, uh, steel trusses in a lot of the building. Uh, but still the old machine, there was an old machine that I didn't even know existed in there. It was, I never went into that section. Uh, it's, it's pretty sad, but I can see where the costs are going to just go. Onward and onward and upward by the, uh, by the time they do all the contamination cleanup. Till they finally get to a construction phase. But still, uh, somebody got to do something. Uh, the roofs have, they put temporary roofs on part of this Union Mill. It blew off. I mean, it's all folded, full order with probably a fifty foot section. It's folded onto itself. So it's leaking again. So it's just.
I said those were beans leaking onto the wood beams.
Well, the, yeah, uh, but the wood beams, as I say, there's only, there's probably twenty-five of them. Uh, and I saw two of them that have had major failure. Uh, but the brick walls and everything that support the beams, everything's in good shape inside. So it's still a very doable project, but it can't wait forever.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Let's hope they get the money this fall.
That's right. Let's hope so. But, uh, again.
They can't go in there, they can't go in there without the money.
Exactly.
So.
So what happens if it, what happens if it doesn't come through? If his money doesn't come through?
Is there a date when we're going to know whether they've got it or they don't got it?
September.
Yeah, I think we're talking end of September, October.
And if they don't get it, and if they don't get it on the first round, there's another mini round, they think, January. I think they're, this, the states. The state's dealing with this throughout the state. All these state projects have, um, state funded projects have major funding gaps because of all the price increases. So it, so. Let's, you know, let's hope they get it. I, I think, um, there, I think they would have been started already if the. I, I think they would have had everything if the prices just didn't, didn't, uh, jump up.
No, let's hope so. The buildings are not going to wait forever. I mean, we, I would say we probably got up to a ten-year window. Before we, we, we start having catastrophic failures in there.
Oh, wow.
I'm sure we're, we're, we're at the, we're at the five yard line.
Okay. I hope so. Cause every time I drive by Mountain Mill, I say, jeez, I hate to see that downtown LA.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. Niagara's starting to come apart too.
Yeah, the good news is a historic site has finally left us. The Bull's Lot. Historic site. That's all I'm going to say. Um. And it does seem like they are cleaning that up if I'm not mistaken, or, you know, it does seem like progress. Not that I want to see this site gone, because many good memories happen there to so many people. Um, but it had seen its time as we all know. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else, anyone? Okay, I think we had a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.